Okay. This convenes the April meeting of the USD four, five, three Board of Education. One quick note for those who are watching us online. Normally, our board meetings, we have a chance for unscheduled public comment, but because of the format required by the Zoom meeting, we can't do that. So if you have questions, we're more than willing to ask them or answer them, or you just send them to your most appropriate person, be that your teacher, the building principal, Dr. Roth, or us. And all the contact information is available on the district website. So with that said, go ahead and have the roll call. Mr. Carney.
I'm here and there.
Mr. Goodman.
Here.
Mr. Powell.
Here.
Mrs. Price.
Here.
Mrs. Wells.
Here.
And I'm here, Doug Darling. And apparently, Mrs. Murphy hasn't been able to connect yet. Did Brenda hear anything from her?
No.
Okay, so, all right. We'll go ahead and do the pledge allegiance and put our hands where our heart and Dr. Roth will stand up and lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, my scouting says now I wanted to say two. Danielle, do it. Roth, if you'd be so kind as to give us the district mission statement.
Yes, the mission of Leavenworth Public Schools is to prepare every student for success in every classroom every day.
And classrooms are virtual today.
That is very much true.
Okay, did we have any scheduled patron input?
None.
All right. Adoption of the agenda.
Mr. President, if this is Mike, is this point of order? Is this a place to remove a consent item or wait until we're ready for consent?
It could be done now if you wanted to.
Yes, I would like to remove the consent item for the play on from line 3.7 and put it at 4.8.
4.1.
4.1, correct.
Okay. All right, we've got a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, Mrs. Price seconded the motion. All those in favor, raise a hand. And we have six. All right, moving on to item two, consideration of the 2018, 2019 financial audit report. And that was some very dense reading. Dr. Roth, Beth is going to handle this for us.
Yeah, Jake and Jake will bring Beth and our auditor in to do a report.
Okay. Okay. Hello. And there is Beth. So you're court, Beth.
Okay, good evening. Tonight, we have Karen Lynn with us to go over the audit report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I appreciate the time on your agenda this evening to talk to you about the audit report. This year, well, first, my name is Karen Lynn, and I'm a director with BT and Co. in Topeka. This year, we have two reports, and I think your agenda mentioned that there are two reports to present the audit this year. Two, one is the financial statements themselves, and the second one is the single audit that is separately presented. The financial statement is under the the letterhead and the opinion of Kramer and Associates out of Leavenworth. And the single audit piece is under the letterhead of BT and Co. and the opinion of our firm, BT and Co. out of Topeka. And just to give you a little background about that, our firm has worked with and professionally with Kramer and Associates for many years. And this year, Tony Kramer approached us and indicated that he he is nearing retirement and he has had some 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 issues in terms of his staffing with his audits. And he asked if we would assist him in getting the completion of the of the audit with the single audit piece, getting that completed. And we were happy to assist him. And so, so that's why the financial piece that he had completed is finished under his letterhead, but then our firm. And we have extensive experience with single audits and and school district audits. And we were able to step in and finish that single audit piece for him. So, but I'm presenting both pieces this evening. So the first, the financial piece. So what I'd like to do is to just present really the conclusions from the audit that are those pieces that are required really for you to hear from from the auditor and those conclusions that are important for you to hear from the audit process. First, the financials received an unmodified opinion. That opinion states that in our opinion, the financial statements are free of material misstatement. And that is the best form of opinion that can be given to a set of financial statements and the opinion that you should be looking for. That opinion is on the regulatory basis. That regulatory basis is the the form of financial statements that the state of Kansas prescribes and that you that you have a resolution at the beginning of the year to adopt. And so that is, excuse me, so that is what we used to call the cash basis. And but cash and budget basis, and now it's called the regulatory basis. So during the audit process, things that we look at are accounting policies, and we look at unusual transactions, things like that. If there's anything that is either inconsistent or unusual, anything not appropriately applied, we would bring those to your attention. Anything that is difficulties during the audit process, those would be items that we would bring to your attention or anything that wasn't wasn't provided to us, any difficulties, anything like that would be indications of more serious issues. And we would be sure to bring those to your attention as a board. So there's nothing in any of those areas that are out of the ordinary or that weren't appropriate. All good conclusions from the audit process. And so all of those are are good conclusions that we want to bring to your attention. Also, and I believe if you have documents, Beth, is that correct? That they all have the documents in front of them? The attached to the letter, not the financial statements themselves, but the letter that was a part of the packet is a letter on the district's letterhead. This is called the management's representation letter. Our audit standards require that certain pieces of information be presented in writing to us as the audit firm. So, and you can see, and actually, in this case, it's addressed to Kramer and Associates. We believe that this is a lot of good information for you as a board, as you read through the financial statements and digest the financial statements. And as you fulfill your fiduciary responsibility towards financial accounting matters. So we do encourage you to read through this letter as you read through the financials so that you have that additional information for you in in understanding of the pieces of information that go into those financial statements. So, so those are the conclusions from the financial statements, again, unmodified opinion, which is the best form of opinion that you can be receiving. And and no, no deficiencies or or other findings that we need to report in regard to the financial statements. And then shifting to the single audit. The single audit is required because of the federal dollars that are received by the district. Approximately $5 million were spent by the district during the year of federal, federal dollars. Those, that requires that we perform some internal control and compliance testing of certain programs that that the district spent its money on, that that money on. We've selected as a part of the the testing and the risk assessment that we performed ended with us selecting Title One and the Striving Readers Comprehensive Literacy Program as the two programs that we tested in our single audit test work this year. If you have that single audit document in front of you, page eight of that document has all of the conclusions from the single audit test work. And this, this, the conclusions from that show that we had no material weaknesses that were identified. But we did have one deficiency, one significant deficiency. And that deficiency was in the area of of the procurement. And that is discussed in that document on page. Starts on page nine and but the bulk of the information on that is on page 10. This is related to, excuse me, related to this suspension and department requirements that are part of the federal, federal program. And you can see the the cause and effect, and then the recommendation. And if you turn on to page 11, management's response is listed there. And I believe that this is is now being addressed and being taken care of by the district. And it was really a matter of not being aware that 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 program requirement was there. So, and the one thing I do want to point out is on page nine, there is it's listed there, audity qualified as a low-risk audity. And the answer there is no. And sometimes that's that's concerning to people, and and I want to point out and describe what that means. So there are. You can either, you're either a low-risk, low-risk audity or or not a low-risk audity. And you, the answer no there is simply because you use the regulatory basis that is prescribed by the state of account, by the state of Kansas. So it doesn't mean that you've done anything wrong or that there's any issues. But unless you're using GAAP, unless you unless you use GAAP, then you're 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 not a low-risk audity. So I just wanted to point that out because sometimes that concerns people when it says, are you a low-risk audity? And the answer is no. So. So other than the one item that I pointed out, there were no other deficiencies or other issues from the single audit from that $5 million of federal expenditures that the district spent during the year. So those are the conclusions from from both the financial and the single audit test work that was done during the year, and I would open for any questions that anyone might have.
So Beth gets to keep her job.
Well, after she saved us that million dollars last month, I think she gets to. Now, as my understanding was, part of the confusion on those sources were those were the sources that were called for in the grant. And as because they were in the grant, they were not checked. Is that correct?
Because they were in the grant, we went with those companies.
Yeah.
Because otherwise, KSTE would have put a little more requirements on us.
Okay, so we had a reason for going with. That was my understanding. I just wanted to make sure that you know, the other board members knew that as well, that. But at this point in time, any going future, we can go ahead and check on possible debarsments, et cetera. Is that correct?
Correct, we will.
Okay.
And part of it is too, is just maintaining documentation of that rationale and that decision. You know, and support for that decision. You know, for that decision. And I think part of it was that that support and that rationale was not documented.
Okay.
Yes, we missed something.
Yeah, and just a one last question from my part, my perspective is we found a deficiency. Is it prudent at this point for the district to file some kind of mitigation record that we have verified that the selectees met the requirements and weren't weren't, we were in compliance, basically.
The the schedule of findings and question costs that's in the report really has all of the factors that are really needed for the federal agencies to evaluate that. So I don't really think that it's necessary to do any further follow-up with that because I think that they will be able to see all of the information, including management's response and corrective action. And they, and with that corrective action, they'll be able to assess what they believe, any, you know, any follow-up that they need. And if they believe that they need follow-up, then they will communicate with you. A lot of the federal agencies will look for next year's follow-up because they will then ask next year's auditor to come in and 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 do a follow-up on this. And their expectation will be that next year, this this issue will be resolved, and then it'll be a closed, a closed issue. And so I think, I think that this, the information that's in the report will really be all that's needed until the follow-up next year.
Okay. Any further questions from the board? Okay. In that case, I need a motion to approve the 2018, 2019 fiscal year audit report.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the report.
Okay, we have a motion from Mrs. Murphy.
Second. Second.
And a second from Mr. Powell. And did Brenda catch when Mrs. Murphy entered the conference?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Have a motion, second, any further discussion? All those in favor, raise a hand or say aye.
Aye.
Okay, seven, zero. Thank you, Ms. Lynn, Ms. Lynn, and for all the hard work. It was mind-numbing to me as I tried to read through that fiscal jargon, which is not my expertise. It did lay it out fairly well, and I do appreciate all the hard work that everybody did.
Appreciate, appreciate the time this evening and look forward to hopefully working with you again. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item three, the consent agenda, which now consists of items. 3.1, check register, 3.2, gift log, 3.3 minutes, 3.4, treasury report, 3.5, consideration of 2020, 2021 administrative certified and classified employee handbooks. 3.6, consideration of membership with KSB and the KSB legal fund. And I do have one question on that. Probably for Mrs. Sloan, if she's available, and that shouldn't they be licensed employee handbooks? I thought we changed all that terminology last year. Or that the state changed it on us.
Mr. Darling?
Yes, Mrs. Sloan. I'm not hearing you. I'm showing you having a dead mic.
Answer.
Yeah. What was the answer on whether that ought to be a licensed employee handbook versus a certified?
They mean the same thing. Previously, it was called certified, but we can change it to licensed to reflect the common language now.
Yeah, I would, I would suggest we might want to think about doing that one. All right.
Darling?
Yes.
Could we verify whose shoulder that is on this screen?
That's Mrs. Murphy.
There she is.
I I don't like it when my wife gives me. So that's okay. We can identify that it's her.
Okay.
So, all right. Need a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as you read the details.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the modified consent agenda.
Second.
Mrs. Wells has a second. Any discussion? See none? Everybody in favor, raise a hand. We have seven, zero. Thank you very much. Moving on to what is now the new item 4.1, consideration of play on and Pixie Lot live broadcasting programs for NHS football and basketball games.
Mr. Powell, you want to ask your question, and then Mr. Koontz is on to be able to respond to it.
Yeah, I've got a number of questions, but the first one is, who's responsible for basically being the executive executive agent for the system for the district?
I would be.
Okay. So then will this allow recording of track events as well?
Yes, it will. Yes, yes, any, any activities that take place at the stadium or in the gymnasium would be report, would be able to be recorded.
Okay. I also noticed that this organization has the capability of providing a similar manual capability. It's even though it's not from specifically the sports perspective, but maybe more to a larger curriculum perspective. Are we looking toward growing this maybe to a broadcast curriculum capability, et cetera?
Yes, it can, there is a man, manual, manual way to do this as well. We have not, I have not looked into the, having a class in that. I know currently we do not. And that is one reason that this system was one that that, you know, it was very helpful for us and the other schools in our league. They, they, they came away with the same perspective as in it can be ran by itself. We don't have to have, we don't have to find somebody every game to run the camera system, so.
No, and I appreciated the automated side of it. That was one of my earlier questions, and I appreciate the feedback that I got early because it allowed me to do some research. So it's actually a pretty interesting system.
It is.
Now, it talked about being able to sell the ability to watch it and for us then to share in those profits. Who's going, and that's why I asked about the executive agent. Who's going to manage that for our district? So we have someone who is staying in touch with the company, who's monitoring the benefit that our students are getting from this.
That, that'll, that'll all run through me. It, when funds are, when we have funds available from them, when they distribute those, I think I put it's four times a year. Once they're, once they're distributed, they will come to the school. The school will deposit them in our athletic account at the high school to be used for athletics. And as I'm, I'm sure you did a little, you saw, did a little research on it. We can put ads on there to sell ad spots if if so choose to do. Plus, we also get a kickback of the monthly or the yearly subscriptions that patrons may, may do, may subscribe to.
Yeah, and and that leads me into my next question, which was who within our district is going to do the develop a marketing plan to be able to market and advertise, if not local, even larger organizations that might help offset the $7,000 we have to invest?
I hadn't really got that far in it as, as of yet. We had, I have the funds available to purchase the systems through our, what's going to be, used to be our, our Citizens National Bank tournament at the, at the high school. Because we are, basically, that tournament is going away because we were not able to secure the teams available to play in that tournament. And we have funds in that account that I was going to, I guess, kind of use towards the purchase of these cameras. But that was something that I was, I wanted to look into was the, you know, maybe trying to find some ads, some people to do that to to offset some of the costs of it, yeah.
Well, and I think that's where I'm coming from is that anytime we can take and leverage a capability and make it grow, make it larger.
Absolutely.
That's our responsibility.
I would think there would be a good thing for the DECA program to.
Number of different ways, exactly.
Absolutely.
So, but, but I think we need an intentional effort to then leverage what, what will be created for the sports program. And I would recommend anyone on the board who hasn't gone and looked at this capability ought to probably take a look at it because my last question is this, you know, Lansing's got a kid who's probably a professional material athlete, and this is a senior year. And so he's not going to get the opportunity in this last month to really show his talent, so talent scouts can't go after him like they normally do. So do you see this as a capability that can be shared with talent scouts? Or is it currently being shared where they can go in and actually dive deep into a school sports program and find those kids that they want to reach out to?
Um, as of right now, we already have a program that does that. But the, by purchasing this, we won't have to have somebody manning a camera to videotape the game and possibly miss plays. Because I know as a former basketball coach, I would be watching game tape and a student will miss two or three plays because they got to talking to a friend or they got distracted or some in, in some form or fashion. But we've already got that capability where we've got games downloaded. The students can actually go in and make a game highlight film already for themselves to do that. But this system will also, you know, allow anybody, you know, a scout to hop on somewhere and watch a game. If they, if they don't want to travel from, I don't know, Iowa somewhere to come watch an athlete that they know they would like to recruit, they could hop on NFHS because they know we're playing, you know, on Tuesday night. They can watch them on there, they can watch them there if they didn't want to have to travel that far. So I mean, there's endless capabilities with it.
Thank you, I appreciate it. And I just would recommend to the board, if you haven't looked at the capability, it's it's probably worth your while to go on the internet and see what this allows our our sports program to do. We just offer that I, I think that we need to probably a little more intentional effort to leverage what we can do to offset the cost because I think it's built into the program, so. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
It's also going to give us a, since we play varsity soccer home games at the Pioneer Stadium, it allows us to do that. And another problem that is always habitual, especially since we decided to move graduation once we're allowed to have them again inside, is allow us to broadcast our senior class graduations, which is always a good thing to spread because there's never enough tickets for the main theater and some of the satellite locations like the auxiliary gym are not necessarily the best places to watch that. So Grandma and Grandpa can watch that from across the nation, which is a good thing.
Now, what's the length of time for this? Is it a contract agreement?
I'm, I'm sorry, sir, I didn't, I didn't, you kind of broke up.
The, the length of time for the contract?
It's a, it's a five-year contract to start off with, and then after that, it just rolls over every year if we continue the system.
Okay.
But it's not a 5,000, it's not a 5,000 or a $7,000 annual expense. It's a one-time 7,000.
Right, right, now, but the equipment is not ours. It doesn't become ours, it's, it's still theirs and they'll pull it out.
It, it is, it, it will be their equipment, but I, I think $7,000 over five years I'm almost, to me, pays for itself in the fact that our kids can be seen by their parents on the road. Our kids can be seen, you know, by any family member that's not in town if they would like to, you know, watch them participate in basketball or wrestling or soccer or football or anything that goes on in those, those athletic venues, venues, so.
Okay. If, if within a five-year period, a better service comes along, what sort of obligation are we locked into?
I, I'm not really sure that we're locked into a five-year, I mean, locked into. It's just a five-year, they, they run the five-year contract because they are leased, they are leasing it, basically leasing it out to us so that five-year contract runs, leases the five-year contract. With, with this system, I know Acacia, Acacia is with this as well. They run all of their playoff games or their state games through NFHS and through this, through this system as well. So I'm not sure, I already, I've looked into some other programs along with this. I'm sure NFHS is going to stay up, stay up and stay. Stay up and stay, stay on top of this game because they're, they're, they're the national federation for, for high school athletics.
Okay. On, I, when, if you look at the contract that they sent as part of it, I think there is a content contract obligation for five years.
Yeah. Well, I mean, yeah. You're correct.
Any further discussion? I'll need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract for $7,000 for a five year agreement for the Pixel Lot School Broadcast Program System.
Okay, Mrs. Murphy made the motion, Mr. Powell seconded it. All, any further discussion? All those in favor, raise a hand. Seven zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much for your time.
Well, thank you too. All right, going on to item 5.1, consideration of elementary social studies and science adoption 2020 and 2021.
It's pretty extensive in what the, what we had for backup on the agenda for you as a board to consider. If you did have any questions regarding this, Mr. Bodensteiner is available to answer any questions.
Any board members have a question?
I didn't have a question. I just had a comment. I appreciate the answers to my questions about. The content and you guys getting back to me so timely. Thank you, Ryan. You've done a great job.
It's no problem. We wanted to take the opportunity to kind of show you how refreshed the adoption process a little bit and having some new board members on who haven't gone through that. So that's kind of the general framework of process we're using moving forward. Obviously every adoption's a little bit different and it's unique personality. But going through that process, that's kind of where we ended up with Twig and Rosie. And I'm happy to answer any other questions or go through any of that, that presentation if there were further follow up.
Yeah, I do, I do kind of want to know more about Rosie Learning. I got on their website. They've only been around for less than four years. How did, how did we come to pick them as opposed to other alternatives?
Yeah. So when I, when we initially started to get that feedback on what kind of the wants and desires were for social studies, knowing that currently we have no common resource. In K through five, we have a ground product in sixth grade currently. That's from when they were truly departmentalized. The feedback, especially from our leadership was to not go in the direction of a quote unquote, traditional textbook or something along that line. Knowing that social studies often folds into other content areas at the elementary level. Also knowing that a number, a couple of our buildings have gone down the route of looking at really project based learning and PBL as an initiative. So when I was looking, honestly looking at things that fit it well into our literacy initiative, things that had some sort of project base to it. And that were lighter on those materials, knowing that that quote unquote textbook was not the route our leadership wanted to go. From there, we had two products. One was a little more, I would call intensive. Price tag was a little bit higher, is a little more in that vein. This one had a little more flexibility. It is a newer, newer company, newer product. But there are other pieces, their STEM, their science, their ELA have been around a little bit longer. We did do some reference, picture those pieces. We're checking districts. One big advantage that I know I mentioned, I think in this response is that because it's a newer and a little bit smaller company. Be more flexible to our needs. So we've actually had discussions already if they're going to take lesson requests from our staff. And potentially add those to their platform because they're looking to number one, grow the company in general, but number two, grow into Kansas specifically because they're based in St. Louis. So they're really wanting, hoping that we can be a partner for them to get back on what Kansas schools need because the social study standards are so state specific. So that flexibility to grow with us. But really the biggest advantage, I think I mentioned this to them as well as too, is that we, that we can use this as a springboard to maybe more community focused, project based learning pieces. Or integrate it to other continent areas since we don't have that common resource right now.
Okay. The other thing that, that I tried to get on their website and maybe this is simply an artifact of the fact that I don't have a contract with them and I can only see one through 20. But it mostly centered around social studies events regarding Arizona. I'm assuming there's more to it than that.
Yeah, there's definitely more to it than that. They've actually, even since we were piloting, they added some Kansas specific lessons.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know was, you know, as long as it's more Kansas focused.
Yeah. Yeah, there's social studies is their newest product that they've rolled out. They've, STEM, I think was their first one and they've had some other pieces and we actually get access to all of them in the purchase, even though social studies is our focus. But they would definitely be the first to say that they're looking to build that up, which is why they've actually talked about bringing in some part time work to work with them to develop more lessons as they get requests from ourselves and from other member districts they're working with.
Okay. I had a question on the spendables in the various experiments. Are they going to be refreshed by the district? Or is the building budget's going to have to encompass all those expendables?
So the kits and I can't give you an exact percentage, but the big ticket items, so to speak, are non consumable in the kits, your scales, your.
Microscopes.
Microscopes, marble racers, goggles for lab safety, things like that. Most of the consumables in terms of the kits that we've come across are pretty common resources. And whether that's something that Ms. Bats and I'll take care of from the teaching and learning side or work with building principals on will certainly want to meet those needs. Part of it is getting it in, and this is part of the rationale too, of rolling it out at those two buildings is to really get in and see how often you need those. Because the kits are actually bigger than what the, the teachers will need in that current year. So they'll last for at least a couple of years, most likely before we even need to do a refresh of the consumables.
Yeah, I just don't want to see three years down the pike. You know, teachers having to take money out of their pockets to pay for the stuff.
And, and having been a principal in the district, if nothing else, we do a great job, I think of supply, having those extra supply rooms and things for teachers. And we've had multiple conversations with our principals on if there is that request that comes up, as long as it's in a timely manner. They're more than willing to provide those specific supplies that are needed if for some reason it's not provided from the district budget.
Ryan, I do have a question. You were just saying that you've been guided by leadership.
Yep.
To making these decisions. Who are you speaking of specifically when you say leadership?
So we did a, a couple of activities with our building administrators and then also with our teacher cadre group who did the piloting. So both groups had different, we did different opportunities with each and there were some screenshots of those in the presentation. But both groups kind of had their, their say, so to speak, on, on wants and desires. And then, then we kind of put it together from there.
Okay. So teachers as well as building administration have all touched them and they've given their approval that they want to go with these directions?
Yeah. So principals were get, we kind of did an overview for principals and they had a demo login if they wanted to access them and obviously talk to their teachers who are piloting. And then we had representatives from every grade, tried to split up among buildings for the actual piloting. And then our instructional coaches were also a part of that too, and participated in the, the recommendation process along with the teachers.
I appreciate that we, sorry, I appreciate that we as a district are moving towards encompassing everything. For so many years, we were English or language arts and math only, and now bringing these back in to give a more encompassed education, I think is super important. And I know our teachers have been doing that on their own, but now to provide that curriculum with it, I think is great. And hopefully, I don't, I, I don't give a, anything about state standard testing and things like that. But hopefully what we're teaching will encompass that and into it as well. So.
What I was going to say for the new board members having gone through a curriculum adoption, this is the same process that we use for any type of curriculum. You know, there's a committee gets together, looks what's out there, does their research, they, you know, go do some piloting and it comes down to about the three. And then they go talk to all their comrades, okay, which is the best? And comes on up to us to approve it by paying the bills for the thing, which is.
Well, I've got a larger curriculum question is, with this being social studies and science, is it on the same curriculum update cycle as the others or does this have a longer cycle?
So generally speaking, we go on six to seven year cycles, depending on the product. And actually Dr. Roth and, and our department had this conversation a couple of months ago is now that becomes more and more pressing and more and more timely. Because you're relying more on online licenses. So with Link Grant, we've kind of reshuffled some of those adoption cycles. Because ordinarily this year would have actually been our core ELA adoption, but with Link Grant and Process, we obviously want to get through that, see where we're at in terms of materials before going through a full potential adoption or partial adoption thereof. So this gave us some flexibility this year to actually look at science and social studies because they are subjects in elementary that hadn't been addressed with as much meat in the past.
Right. And I appreciate that. That's really what I was getting at was whether or not we were having a longer term investment into something we were buying into as a developed curriculum program. So it kind of goes back to what you said, over that period of time that we're going to have this, they will be working with us for how long to continue to improve this curriculum?
So we, we built in, I believe through multiple professional development days for each, I want to say three off the top of my head, I mean, the quotes in front of me. To work with the companies actively and that's just for in person professional development. For each of the products and, and all the products that I've worked with so far, since being down here, they actually will assign us a customer success manager type person who's not the salesperson. But they're more responsible for helping us work together. And if we have the need on, hey, we're not seeing how this part works or we're trying to integrate this experiment and it's taking triple the amount of time you say. They can kind of brainstorm those even beyond formal professional development during implementation.
Well, for instance, in two years, if we think that we need more Kansas specific social studies integration into the format they've created. Are they going to be available under the contract to help us improve that or modify what we bought from them?
Yeah. So that's, I mean, for Rosie specifically, that's really been a big positive with them is that because they're a smaller company, they really are looking to customize things. Now, do we have a contractual obligation that they have to produce X number of lessons that we request? No, not at this point. But social studies is very unique in that it's, it's truly a state specific set of standards. Science is the next generation science standard. So they're adopted across many states. So programs have made, programs that align to that, whereas Kansas is Kansas social studies standards. There's not a resource out there that's going to make truly a Kansas specific program. But this is one that will let us customize and make requests down the line and, and they have a, put a cap on what that would look like in the years to come. But I think making that multi-year commitment like you mentioned will, will help in that because we, that gives us a little leverage to say we're a partner with you. We want to build and grow together.
Right. Thank you.
Any further discussion? In that case, we'll need a motion for purchase of Rosie Learning Company for six year access for a total of 27,000. And then for Twig Science, grade two, six for a six year adoption at Anthony Elementary and Leavenworth Warren Elementary. Our intermediate center for an amount of 117,886.72 cents for elementary. And 38,860.50 cents for sixth grade totaling 156,703.22 cents.
I'd like to make, to approve the Rosi Learning Company Social Studies for $27,000 for the six year access. And for the Twig Science Program for a total of 156,703.22 cents. This is encompassing the 117,886.72 cents for elementary and the 38,816.50 cents for sixth grade.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion from Mrs. Murphy and a second from Mrs. Wells. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise a hand. Seven zero.
Thank you all. I appreciate it. Have a great evening.
And for the new board members that these prices for a new curriculum adoption are not, you know, unique, that's pretty. When you do a new adoption.
Yeah, expensive.
I think they're a little lower than what last one that we had.
Yeah, well, when you get to those core, core resources like your math and ELA, those all, those go up even more. But obviously science with having the kits is definitely can be, be a costly one. So I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you very much. Moving on agenda, item 6.1, consideration of resurfacing of the Warren Stadium parent parking area.
So for items six and seven, they kind of go together. We'll bring on Matt and Dave to answer any of the questions that you as a board may have. But again, we try to put as much as we possibly can in the content area to where you understand the processes and things that have been. Vetted before it comes to you.
Okay. We're waiting for Matt and Dave to come on. I, I, I share Mr. Powell's concern that the city's portion of that parking lot's going to look a lot like the parking lot at Walmart in a couple of years.
I think I'm on now.
Yes.
I don't know, I don't know if Dave's on yet or not. I guess you can.
I'm here. I'm not getting a picture.
Okay. Thanks, Dave.
You're welcome.
Are there questions that we can answer for the board?
Matt, I do have one question. Since we're not physically in the buildings, when do they anticipate doing the work on the lots?
Dave, I think can answer that question. I think it's later this, early summer, but Dave, if you have that.
It's probably going to be early summer. As soon as we get the, if you guys select to take the bids that we got. We will, I will call the winners of each bid and see when they want to schedule them. I'd like to do them as soon as we possibly can, but it'll be up to their scheduling.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. And we've gone ahead and moved some of the other projects we had scheduled for the summer up. I think Matt's crew's already working on the cafeteria. Warren, is that correct, Matt?
Yeah. So Warren, we've already moved some of the, the projects. Like you said, the kitchen has been cleaned out and advancing that for construction. The cafeteria space is being used for storage of some goods. And, and Dr. Roth, Jake and I have been talking with construction companies to try to advance what we can and get, get a little head start.
Okay. So they're, Matt and company have been doing a good job since we're not in the buildings, actually getting some stuff done so that when we go back in. Late July, early August, knock on wood. We can, you know, we'll have everything straight. So any further discussions about the resurfacing of Warren?
Yeah, I have a question. Is this project, was it projected maintenance or is this an unscheduled budget item?
Over the past couple of years, since we've been putting more salt than salt and sand, because that's what the city switched over to. We've seen some more holes developing, a lot of more spider cracks, as I call them, or spider web looking cracks on the surface. If we do the two inch mill, we should take care of almost all of the deterioration. There are some spots that we've gone through and filled in with cold patch, which they'll grind out, fix the hole, which might be a little bit deeper than the two inches. And then we'll go back over with a two inch overlay of asphalt, which will give us, I'm hoping another 20 years.
Okay. Well, I guess it's a broader question is because we know this is going to happen and particularly this case, as you said, we switched to a material that. Contributes to a faster decline in the surface. Are we looking at all of our, because I know we're doing pavement now at the high school, we now, we have done this project. Do we kind of have a standing pecking order of the surfaces that we are going to have to deal with in our budgets and, and, and in our budget forecasting? So when we come up to budget in June and July, are we kind of going to see, well, not this year, but next year and in three years and in four years, are we, do we kind of have a layout for this exact same kind of thing? Based on your all's assessment of the condition of our surfaces?
And I would say for Matt, he does, he does that. He's got a spreadsheet that takes it out not only five years in pretty good detail, but longer. This is not really very bad. Just wait until he gets to talk to you on roofs.
Right, yeah, we talked to him about some of this.
Yeah, so Mr. Powell, if I could, I believe, I know where you're going with the question. You've talked to me in the past about what's forecasted. So annually, as Mr. Darling mentioned, I do have funds set aside for asphalt repair and concrete repair. Dave and I work closely on those projects, and then Dave takes those out to bid. So we had some money that will cover this, set aside for asphalt and concrete across the district. We carry about $80,000 a year just for general repairs of sidewalks and parking lots. So this project specifically was not identified early on, but we anticipate that type of spend each year for repairs. This one advanced because of some concerns for safety, and as Mr. Stoka had mentioned, a decline of that surface being used more this past year for parking, salt treatment and those type of things. So we always, as those projects pop up because of safety concerns, we do advance those a little bit ahead, and they take priority. To answer your second question regarding the pecking order, the second item that we have on tonight is a slurry coat, a separate standalone item from this one. And that will help extend the life of our parking lots, and what we're looking at there are parking lots that will be approaching the 10-year mark from the last construction process. That is an effort to continue extending that. Again, Mr. Stoka and I visit, and we try to anticipate what needs attention and when that needs attention, so we don't get hit with a complete replacement of a parking lot, which would be much more expensive. I hope that answers your question a little bit.
Yeah, it does. No, I appreciate it. Just one last question, just so I'm clear. The area that you portrayed in the diagram is all that we are going to deal with. So we will have our surface, and then the cities is going to look like whatever the cities is going to look like in that same parking area. Is that correct?
Yes, that would be correct. That blue shaded area that I provided you. Now, the city side is not treated as often as ours. So it's not in as bad a shape, but it is on its way, and we are trying to work with the agents there that we would to make sure that they were aware of that whole opportunity and working with them.
No, thank you. Appreciate it.
And if you remember, Mr. Kramer, when he did the city report that last meeting, we were able to actually have talked about that they're throwing a lot more money this year into their city street projects, but this wasn't one of the street projects that they were going to take care of. All goes into, so any further discussion?
Yeah, I got a question. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yep.
Oh, in the past, we've had, to me, in my mind, a few issues with some of the concrete specs. Are you writing the spec for the mix, Dave, or?
I'm pulling all the specs right out of the city. I had the city send me over their specs, so we're going with the same specs as the city does.
On the mix?
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, that's good.
Okay, I need a motion.
Do you want separate motions, one for six and one for seven for the slur? Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resurfacing of the Warren Stadium to go with the contract bid. Trying to see this tiny font.
Paving.
For approved paving. I'm trying to find the lower figure that we have here.
Man, it's $62,575.
For $62,700 and
No, five, five hundred and sixty-five.
Five dollars. And that's with approved paving.
Okay, we got a motion.
A second.
Okay, we'll let Mr. Carney second it. All those in favor, raise a hand. That's seven zero. Thank you very much. Moving on to item seven, consideration of surrey seal and crack repair. Basically the same thing, and I think Matt's already talked about any questions.
President, I make a motion that the board approve the consideration of surrey seal and crack repair as briefed by Mr. Dediki.
From McConnell, it's the amount of $22,568.
And the amount of $22,568 from McConnell and Associates.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion from Mr. Powell and a second from Mrs. Murphy. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise a hand. Seven zero. Thank you, Matt, and
Yep, thank you.
Okay, now, the infamous eight-point-one consideration, 2020, 2021 internet E-rate application.
So this was what we were actually going to do the special meeting on, and so Brian provided those numbers. This is an annual Beth and Brian, and it was Kevin and Brian before that would bring this before the board, and this is just federal dollars that flow through for our internet connections as well as other technology needs that is covered under E-rate as well, so there's questions, we can bring Brian on. It's up to you as a board.
Okay.
I think it's all pretty self-explanatory. I'm really shocked that considering spectrums within the area for as long as it has couldn't have done better for a bid for us. Other than that, I would like, if there's no other discussion or questions, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve the expenditure of $59,700 for our internet provider being the Networks of America.
You got a second, or excuse me, a motion from Mrs. Murphy, a second from who?
Jackie.
Jack. Right, any further discussion? Raise the right hand if you're in favor. That's seven zero. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to item number nine, consideration of health insurance broker.
So as I shared with you in the briefing, that it will be our recommendation come July to go to from Marsh and McLennan, who's done a fine job for us, to Hayes Company. Basically, it comes down to what Hayes Company can provide in analytical data throughout the process that would give us an opportunity to gauge better what we're using in a plan, what's not being used in a plan, and then be able to devise a plan that more meets the needs, plus get a better understanding budgetary-wise moving forward, and they do a very extensive job with that analytical data and the communication piece. And again, we have no, nothing that Marsh McLennan had done. They were outstanding vendors for us, but felt like this would be an opportunity to give them, to give a different opportunity, not only to us to analyze that, but another vendor as well.
And this is just informational right now, correct?
Well, we'd like to go ahead and have a motion to approve going ahead and moving with that, and then in July, when we do all of the, it will be on there more as a formality at that time.
Okay. Thank you. Motion to switch health insurance broker?
I'd like to make a motion to switch to Hayes Company for our healthcare broker. Healthcare insurance broker.
We have a motion to switch brokers.
Second.
Marsh McLennan to Hayes from Mrs. Murphy. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, raise a hand. Seven zero. Thank you very much. Moving on to item 10.1, consideration of continuous learning plan memorandum of understanding.
This just really is allowing us to do the continuous learning plan with our teachers association. Ms. Riddle and Ms. Sloan's done a nice job working together. I believe we've had, we had 83%, what'd you say? Ms. Riddle reported to Ms. Sloan, there was 96% of our teachers that voted that were in favor of the memorandum of understanding. This is just basically allowing us to adjust to the continuous learning plan.
I want to be very thankful to Sloan, Mrs. Riddle, and everybody who worked on this because this shows that people are not locked into what used to be, but are reacting, willing to work outside the box at this once-in-a-century event type thing. So any further discussion? Need a motion to approve the MOU?
Still moved.
Okay. All right, we got Mr. Carney made the motion, Mrs. Murphy seconded. Any further discussion? If not, raise a hand. Seven zero. Okay, superintendent's report.
Have one thing prior to, just for informational purposes from the board, we have a, when we were all meeting together, the board elected to do a special meeting on April 20th. Is that something that you want to do, that content, something that you would like to do via the Zoom meeting? Or would you rather postpone those special board meetings until we can all be together in a room?
How critical is it, Mike?
This was for informational requested by the board, just to keep the board up to date on different happenings throughout the district. This would be, at this point in time, it was presentation from Ms. Knight and the high school. Primarily, this meeting was going to be focused around the mental health and the grant that we received in partnership with the state and the guidance center. So that's what this one was more geared to, geared to, but at that time, that was when we were all meeting in person and under one roof. We can still do it if that's the direction the board would like to go. I just want to remind you that that was on the 20th, and we could start planning one way or the other based on what you as a board decide this evening.
Sure, while I know we're not taking a formal vote at this point, I personally would like to see us get updated on what happened because much of what we were going to learn had already taken place before this event, you know, this tragedy that we've had ongoing occurred. And more importantly, timing-wise, we're getting near the end of the time when we can talk to parents and we can give them information they need to know going into a vote that's going to happen in August regardless of this crisis.
Well, Mike May, I didn't hear you. I thought you said April 20th.
Well, that was, next Monday was when the special board meetings take place.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Carney, it's March 20th. Oh, yeah, April 20th. We are in April.
But, but we're looking at being together as a group?
No, it would be Zoom like this.
Oh, okay. Well, I thought you said somebody get together as a group.
I said if you wanted to wait.
Well, that's why I asked, it was critical. I like being in a room with people. This is kind of not my bag, I guess, but I love technology, but not like this as far as meetings go.
You just gotta need to be an introvert like me.
Okay.
So
Whatever the board wants to do is fine, but I just
Want to continue on on the 20th then?
Yeah, because Mr. Powell's comment that it's important that we get this information out there because there will be a vote in some fashion that's currently scheduled for August for people to agree to tax themselves for this. So it's kind of an important thing to me, I think.
So my, my question is, if we have this special board meeting, can, will it be recorded and be sent out to the public? Because our special board meetings usually are not, and it would be important that this information be available. How, how the mental health aspect of it will, does impact our kids and the progress that we've made so far just with the funding that we've been able to get on our own?
Yes, it will be recorded, and we can show, share that like we currently do on YouTube.
Okay, knowing that, I say yes. We go forward, and Ms. Knight give us all of the good information that she has available as to why we need to continue the mental health programs that we have and can grow it.
Well, I think it's even more important because my understanding of adolescents having survived my own early is that there's a lot of stress on adolescents, and this environment we're currently in is actually causing more stress.
Yes, it is.
So I don't
So Doug, it's your call on the special session, right?
Well, I would like to have members of the board there, but yes, I would like to
Okay.
hear, you know, if you guys thought it, I'm in favor of having one, so you know, Dr. Roth, I think you can count that much on your both hands, right?
Yep, got it. We'll continue as planned. Just wanted to bring that to the board's attention.
And it'll be strictly an informational on mental health and no other discussion.
It'll be just dialogue, yep, back and forth.
Dialogue, back and forth. And after we see what McKnight has to say, so.
Yep, and so then my last thing I have is we're getting ready to show you a video. I think it's pretty powerful. Jake did a nice job putting it together and visiting with each building's teacher of the year candidate. It's going to be about a 15-minute video. And it shares some of the challenges that they've seen in our continuous learning plan, but also they share some successes, and I think that's pretty powerful for you as a board to hear that, and that will wrap up my superintendent's report.
I have one thing, question ahead of time. We've gotten in contact with every student now because about 10 days ago, there were some schools that we hadn't gotten 100% of the
Right, we're still, we met today as brought all the admin together via Zoom today. Principals and assistant principals throughout the district as well as directors. And we're still not 100% of contact, but it's not because we haven't reached out or tried. And so some of our principals now are going to go door-to-door to families that haven't reached back out to us. And so that process is still ongoing. And we talked today that families or students that haven't made an effort, they still under the compulsory attendance law, so truancy still could come into play in this, and so just because the learning model has changed compared to what we were prior to spring break, the expectation of learning still being available and taking advantage of that availability is still a responsibility of the families within our school district.
Yeah, I'm sure reasons.
Yeah. More about this, right? We're going to talk more about this.
Yeah, are we going to talk more about this? This is
We could talk all night. It's your guy, it's your meeting.
It's our meeting.
I have a little problem with the truancy part. I mean, what, exactly how are you going to enforce that? I mean, what's going to dictate?
If, if they're not making an effort to respond to teachers or check in or call the office and verify why they're not doing that, they still have an obligation to educate their kid, just like if it was a brick and mortar. And that's not our rule. That's not something that Mike Roth said all of a sudden, this is what's being told to us from our state board of education through our commissioner of education.
Okay, but so if we got a sophomore staying at home by himself every day, are we going to, somebody's going to contact the parent that he's not
We're going to, we're going to send out a letter to parents to identify that Mike Roth hasn't been in class for the last two weeks, three weeks. If no one reports If no one reports back to us by such and such time, we'll turn it over to the county attorney as truant. That, now what they do with it is totally up to them, but the process for us or the expectation for us from the state of, the Kansas State Department of Education is to follow that.
Okay, well, as long as we do our job, I think it's going to be ugly myself. I hope not, but.
Well, and that gets to my question, which is, you know, our job is to give a child an opportunity for the future by providing them a level of proficiency. And I think that our district and our leaders and administrators have worked their tails off to try to make this work. But I guess the question comes down to, and maybe it's fodder for a future special board meeting, not too far down the road, but what do we do with students who don't make a minimum proficiency cut by the time school traditionally is over? We still have a responsibility to get them ready for the next year or to send them out into the world, so.
And that, right, and that's part of the, that's part of this continuous learning plan and communication with teachers. You know, we're, we're, we're over ninety percent compliant as a district as far as reaching the number of students that we have. You know, we're still working on that ten percent, but it takes an effort both ways. Not to bring alarm to anybody, not to predict what the future may or may not look like. But there's no guarantee with how things are going to ebb and flow with this pandemic that we start on time or that it's not interrupted sometime next year due to this. And if we don't follow through now and set expectations and have what we're doing validated not only by our staff, but also by the students and their families, we're in for a bigger struggle as this may linger on. My fingers are crossed that this is the only time that we have to do this. But just like anything else, this prepares us for future opportunities to learn, but it also prepares us for future opportunities to deal with crisis situations that are out of our control. And so our instruction from Dr. Watson has been to have that expectation that even though this model is different than what they're used to, the expectation of participation and the opportunity to learn still should be there.
So I, I think it's super important that we make a hundred percent contact with all these families to ensure and to put our teachers' minds at rest because I know that we've got those teachers, that their heart and soul are in each one of these kids because they're their kids and they're not there to give them that daily hug and let them know that they're loved and cared about to make sure that those kids are okay. We need to go door to door and make sure that somebody sees that they're okay if their families are not checking in. So, we need.
I would offer Danielle the same thing is that we shouldn't just leave this to the teachers. At a certain point, we need to bring all of the forces to bear to reach out and find out what's going on with these kids. Because I know there's teachers right now that I've talked to that are, they've tried and tried and tried to get ahold of a parent and have been unable. That's why I think that our staff and our educators are doing a great job in this challenge. But I have no problem bringing in law enforcement or others just to go to the door, knock on the door and say, what's going on? How are we doing? Where's your child?
Yeah, I absolutely do not want our teachers having to go to those doors because you don't know what's behind those doors or what's been happening behind those doors. And I don't want them put at any court, any sort of risk, even if it's just one, one tenth of a percent. I don't want them at risk for catching something because they went to that door or meeting a hostile situation because they went to the door. That is something for law enforcement and a truant officer to handle, not an educator. That's just my personal belief.
This needs to be handled just like we would handle any other regular situation. If there's a child that's not coming to school, we move it up the next rung on the ladder and, and have them deal with it. So I think, I think Dr. Oath is right and he's doing it the right way. So I think we just need to give it more time and keep on trying.
Our teachers have done a phenomenal job with what they've been given and the communication. And, and you'll see in this video, some of the excitement and that they've shared with us in this process. But our admin, our building principals, they're, they're, they're doing the follow up and doing things as well. And so it's definitely a collaborative effort because this is unique to all of us. And we're going to continue to grow and we're going to grow in the right direction because of this. So my hat's off to the entire staff of USD four five three because there, we have a bunch of rock stars when it comes to what they're able to do with kids and the timeframe that they were able to do it in.
Okay, I think we can see the video now.
So with younger kids, it's a little more difficult for them to get on and connect by themselves. So we've had a lot of parent interaction with that. Some of the cons may have been, you know, they're struggling to get on initially or, you know, they may have multiple kids in the house and they're all using the same device. And so it was, you know, kicking them off and then they had to get another kid on with the codes. And so we're constantly sending codes and we found some parents to be frustrated through that process. However, I think as a team, we did a really good job of continually reaching out and making sure that we were connecting with them and kind of coaching them through the process and just letting them know that this is something new and we're all doing this together. Don't worry about if you can get on today or if you don't complete it today, it'll always be there. And there will be many more Zooms that you can get on. So I think, you know, technology wise, maybe kind of started out as a con, but it's given us an extra opportunity to connect with parents. And with our kiddos, I'll never forget the first time we got on Zoom last week and they all got to see each other. I mean, I was almost in tears because of how happy they were to just see each other. They had no idea what Zoom was and so that was really awesome to see our kids connecting with each other on Zoom and to still be just as excited over technology and seeing each other through the camera than being in class. And then when it comes to their activities on Seesaw, it's been cool to see their creativity. You know, some kids choose to use their voice more. Some kids choose to do a picture every single time. Some kids choose to do a video. And so I think they've all found creativity within how they're choosing to complete the activities. Another thing that we kind of run into is we co-teach in kindergarten, so we share all forty kids. And so on the teaching side of it, we have to be in constant communication. We were in constant communication when we were at school and that was so much easier to do because we were face to face. And so I think that's been one of our, can continue, has continued to be a big challenge for us but to just constantly communicate on the teacher's side of it because we are still constantly working together all day, every day. But it has, you know, made our team a whole lot better in the end as well, so.
I think the hardest part for me, I think I was more, especially when the idea like came out, I was super skeptical and nervous about how I was going to reach kids through like Zoom or some kind of online format whenever over half my kids have, the majority of my kids have huge communication delays already. A few of them are nonverbal. It's hard enough in the classroom when I'm physically with them to get them to be attentive sometimes just with the various disabilities and abilities that they have. So I think that was what was my initial, what am I going to do? You know, with the population of kids that I work with, it's already, you know, like I said, it's hard enough at school. So, that was kind of, it's still been kind of crazy. But I mean, I've kind of, and I have a student teacher right now, so that's kind of been nice to have someone to bounce ideas off of and things like that to help. But it's not been as bad as I thought, I will say that. I think like some of the positives in it is when I do get to get online and Zoom with my kids, it's nice to see and be able to communicate also and have the parent right there too. Whether they're in the screen or just in the room, it's nice that the parents can see kind of the relationship that the student I have and then also kind of what the student's capable of too. So that's always fun to see.
I think that the hardest part of all of this is taking everything that we always do as individuals and bringing them all together at the same time. I know for myself, I can walk into my classroom and I can be a rock star teacher. And I can go home and I can be a rock star mom. And I can go onto the soccer field and I could be a rock star coach. And I can clean house and I can cook and, and I can do everything, but they're all individual. And what's happening now is families are they have to do everything all at one time. And so I think that that has been the biggest struggle, at least for me, but I'm noticing that with my families too. But on a positive note, what I have noticed is I've noticed a change in my kids. Even the parents will tell me that their children are helping cook dinner now and their children are reading to their siblings because maybe there's just nothing else to do. I don't know. But they're, they're getting out and they're helping with yard work when it's warm and they're, they're helping fold laundry. And they're, I don't know, it's bringing families closer together. One thing that I have noticed is when we first handed out Chromebooks, I thought that I was going to watch iBoss and see my kids on YouTube all day long. I thought they would play games and so that was, I thought was going to be the biggest struggle, but they're not. The finding is that less and less of them are logging on at all. They log in and they get their assignments done and then they go off, which I think is bringing that family togetherness. Now they're forced to be together and so they're starting to want to be together. I, I think that parents are learning a lot more about technology and how to help their kids. I, I've talked to some parents who are doing science lessons at home. Every day at two thirty-five on my Zoom, we do a science lesson with things that are kids you can find at the house. Dish soap, eggs, whatever. And I'm having kids email me and parents email me, they're finding random learning opportunities around their house. They're, you know, doing science experiments and sending them to me, which is really great. Some of my kids are growing garbets they want to share with their classmates. And just, I, I don't know, I think that this is stressful, but I think that we have a really, really great opportunity to connect with families the way we never could before. Because now I can have a one-on-one Zoom meeting with parents and their children and I can walk families through what their kids do every single day. So it's scary out there, but this is an amazing opportunity for us to grow as people and as families and as educators and learners.
We'll just share a little bit. It has been very challenging because at the midst of all this, my mother was taken into the hospital for breathing problems and spent a week and a half in ICU. So we were dealing with that. My daughter is a frontline nurse and her husband is a police officer. So in the midst of getting ready for all of this, I've also become a full-time parent, grandparent to a five-year-old and an eighteen-month-old. So I feel that I'm seeing what a lot of our parents are. That maybe I wouldn't have quite understood as much because I'm trying to homeschool the five-year-old while doing my job. What I saw, it was when we moved, went into the building to pack up and get things ready, it, it was the saddest thing. But then seeing our kids as they came through and seeing their faces and how excited they were to see us just really brought home why we do this again, to see that we have that impact. Every student that came through, they were excited to see us. They were excited to get their things from school. It's been a learning curve and I don't let, it's probably going to continue to be a learning curve there. Each day, we're going to find new ways to reach our students. We started off with packets, did some surveys with our parents and packets seemed to be the way that some of them wanted to go. But as we're getting into this and learning, they're getting more familiar with Zoom, getting more familiar with Seesaw, getting more familiar, Moby Max we've always done, but as we're doing that, I'm seeing that, that learning curve of where they felt like they had to have the packets, we're kind of moving towards more of an online. I see that the parents are the most important thing I think right now is that my parents know they can reach me at any time. I've given my phone number, I have Remind, we have Seesaw, they have my email. And I have spent days when Zoom wasn't working, I FaceTimed with some of my students. When Zoom wasn't working, I sent out some new things through Remind and I've had many phone calls. And I think that the most important thing and the thing that I've seen through this is that everybody has learned to be even more flexible than you already are as a teacher because you have to be. And I think that all of us are learning new ways to reach our students. And some of those days on my office hours, I have students come in, not because they need help with their activities that they're doing, but more just because they want that interaction. And they just want to talk. I've had, one child gets on quite frequently, just to chat. And so I think that the students, it's hard on them, but I think they're finding through talking with all of my colleagues that we're all there and they know that. And so they feel safe even in this, you know, unusual time that they're going through.
So I spent, you know, a couple of Saturdays so that kids can come back and get their stuff. In our building, the people that are still there have been more than wanting to run back to a classroom, look for that horn that doesn't have a name tag, even though I have said a billion times, make sure your infant has a name tag. So kids have stuff to work on. I have, and teachers everywhere have researched online opportunities for kids. And I was fortunate in that there are some things that are already in place. Like there's a program called Smart Music, which works a lot like private lessons. And it raises the kids as they progress, which means one, they don't have to wait for me to assign something. And two, I may have forty kids in a class, but they don't all forty have to have the same assignment. And in that respect, I like it a lot. In that I can take the food player, they didn't play as well as my first year food player, still give her assignments that are adequate and challenging to where she is, to build into where I want her to be. And one that, you know, is not playing it at eighth grade level, great, Smart Music will put you where you belong and, and help you continue. Then if they have the questions, they Zoom and we figure out how to make it work. The only thing I would say that we miss is that whole collaboration thing. Because music, band in general, is a collaborative effort. You know, when you are preparing a piece, you are looking for balance and what part has the melody in, where you come in and, and how you make music be this piece of the composer envisioned. And that is hard to do without significant technology. You know, we, we've seen the online things where you have twenty people on a screen and they're all singing together and they make it look really easy. But I'm telling you, in that background somewhere, there's somebody with a metronome, you know, or a clicker so that everybody is playing the same thing at the same time, you know, they're not all together. And then somebody else on the outside is balancing those parts because you can't balance parts online. You know, it's something that somebody's doing as they're putting this video together. So would I want to do this all the time? Only if I were a private lesson instructor, would it be valid to do it all the time. But for what we're working with now, it is really heartening to know that I, especially if kids are, you know, in the, you know, in it to win it, they are able to progress and progress at the speed that they are capable of progressing without my necessarily looking over their shoulder, which for some kids is really, really freeing. Well, a couple that I'm having a hard time keeping up with. Yeah, it is extraordinarily free.
So I think the biggest shift was like looking at how the classroom man versus the expectations of how they can run this at home and how I can just maintain their skills. So one of the things I always like tried to impart with my students as we went into this, if you sat on the couch for eight weeks and then I ask you to run a five K at the end of it, it's going to be so painful. But if you just kind of maintain the skill, walk, run, you know, just keep going, running that five K won't be a problem if you just keep working out. And that's our goal is to just keep you moving through these skills that are going to come back next year and the year after that and the year after that. So just not losing all of that. I really enjoy digging into what I do and looking at what's. I really enjoy digging into what I do and looking at what's the most important? How do I dial it down and how do I make it accessible to all students at home? I think one of the biggest things we'll take away from this are the haves and the have-nots. As much as we would like to say that our education system is equitable, looking at this situation makes it very clear as to who has more resources and who doesn't. And just trying to make it equal for everyone or equally, so that everyone has an opportunity to be six, six, uh, sorry, successful has been a huge challenge. Um, even with packets and Zoom and videos and more supplemental things, what a teacher is able to do in the classroom is just astounding. You start to realize how many things you adjust as you're teaching that you have to think about beforehand when you're trying to turn this all over to them. And so I was homeschooled for eight years of my life. So having that background, I think, really helped me in this process because I was like, oh, okay. Like, how can I like outline this in a way? Because I was the kid who, you know, just wanted to do all of my English and then I didn't want to do anything else. So I would just do absolutely what I had to do in math and then science and all the others. And and so designing a curriculum where they could self-paced. And so like my curriculum right now, they have four weeks in their classroom. So the kids who, and I told them in the upfront, I was like, if you're overwhelmed, go to week one and week one only and only look at that. If you're bored and or excited because you can work through things, keep moving on. And I have a kid who's on week three and so she'll contact me about what's going on and, you know, how to work through it. So I really liked being able to step back and look at, okay, how do I make my curriculum accessible? And how do I push the kids who need to be pushed and how do I bring it way back to the kids who just need a safety net?
So as you can see, the the teachers and and that process is very beneficial to us because we got great feedback from outstanding teachers. And so I was excited to share that with you as a board.
No, thank you. I think we all enjoyed seeing that. And since, you know, hearing some of the challenges that the teachers are having to face and deal with every day, it's a little bit more real to to be on the front lines. Appreciate that. Any further questions?
Have we gotten most of the issues ironed out with Zoom? I know that there was an issue with it a week or so ago.
Um, we we met, like I said, we met it this morning as a group and none of the principals identified anything like that in the last eight to ten days. Uh, once we did the reset at the high school, it seems to be uh much better uh for them and us as a district. And so, um, you know, we'll we'll deal with those challenges as they come up. But Mr. Uh, Harrod and Ms. Batson and and Mr. Bodensteiner, they did a great job working together. Laura probably spent, her and Brian spent countless hours trying to make sure that uh they could test and retest uh this process and uh and we feel pretty good at where we're at. Will something else possibly pop up? Yes, and if it does, we'll deal with that. Uh, but Brian and his crew and and the teaching and learning crew have really done a nice job helping secure and finding ways to make this as secure as possible.
All right. Thank you very much. Now we go on to executive session for non-elected personnel. And how long are we gonna need?
Well, I figured you might wanna figure five minutes in just to make sure everyone gets connected. The number, the phone number and the 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 dial-in information was sent to you, so uh keep that secure. Um, and so Amy and I thought maybe fifteen minutes to start with.
Okay. Uh, we'll need a motion to go into executive session for twenty minutes or so. Probably I'll just make it
Your president.
Eight o'clock.
It'd be fine.
Executive session to discuss non-elected personnel pursuant to the exception of the Kansas Open Meetings Act in order to protect the privacy interests of the individual individuals to be discussed. That we will return to this open session in twenty minutes, which that would bring us to seven fifty-six. We will invite Dr. Roth, Amy Sloan, and one of our board attorneys, Robert Hengela, Amy Shuring, Henry Thomas, or Kate Gallin.
It'll be Robert this evening and also Beth will join us for a little bit.
And Beth.
All right, we got a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Goodman. All those in favor, raise a hand. Mike Carney. You gonna go into executive session?
I think Mark's, Mike's having some issues.
Mike, you're still muted.
Yeah, you're still muted. Unmute.
This is Mike, pal. Uh, my video's off, but I I think I have my audio and I, uh, my hands raised.
Okay. Thank you.
We can hear you.
All day. We can't see Mike Carney though. I can see him, but.
Maybe have somebody give him a call.
Mr. Carney, do you, can you hear Mr. Carney? Wave if you can hear us.
All right, good, he can hear us.
So he can.
The the screen says that you're muted, Mike. See, see if you're muted. Now you're unmuted.
Okay, now you're not muted. Okay, you in favor of going into executive session? For.
With a short break.
Mister darling, you wanna extend that, can we extend that to eight o'clock with the delay?
I'm gonna see if we can amend that motion and just switch it to eight o'clock because we've already lost a couple of minutes.
All right. And uh, we got a motion, got a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Goodman. All those in favor, raise a hand.
This is Mike, pal. Aye.
Aye, okay, great. Seven zero.
I'm speaking my hand.
Yeah, we're gonna go mute and then call in, so.
And you don't, you don't have to exit this. Jake will take care of everything on his end to mute. And so if you don't have to leave the room or you don't wanna leave the room, you don't have to.
Okay, well, I have to.
So we are calling in on the telephone, correct?
Oh, that's right. You're on the phone.
That's correct. Mr. Goodman, you will call in on the phone.
Yeah, I'm still in here.
Yeah, I'm still in here.
Okay. All right, there's four of us.
I'm sure I just can't move it. Somebody's turned off my visual.
We need to mute our phones if we're going to be unmuted.
Yeah. Difficult than not.
Okay, I've muted mine, so.
I've muted mine.
All right. We need to.
You have to select your video for those that haven't shown up. He's.
We only need four to make a motion.
We only need four and we got five, so.
I make a motion that we continue our executive session by 10 more minutes, coming back here at 8:11.
I second.
Got a motion, I second. All those in favor, I'm raising my hand, that makes it 5-0.
So Mr. Goodman and Mr. Carney did not come in. Okay, very good.
All right, so let's go ahead and mute us again.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, Alisa.
Okay, I can hear.
I'd like to make a motion that we extend.
I'd like to make a motion that we extend for another 10 minutes and meet back in here at 8:21.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion from Mrs. Murphy and a second from Mrs. Price. All those in favor, raise a hand. I'm raising.
Aye.
So it's five zero. Oh. Okay. Let's go back.
I can't start my camera for some reason.
And Jake, turn my video on again.
Yeah, I can't get my video either.
Jake's got the. Okay, I will start my video.
Okay, I'm on, but I cannot start my video because the host has stopped it.
Oh, he's.
I promise I'm dressed.
Okay, Mike is back on, but he hadn't turned on his speaker yet.
How's that?
Now you're on.
All right, we're back in executive or back.
Now I can't hear anybody.
Okay, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to approve the staffing report as presented to us in our executive session.
Second.
Have a second.
Judy, you're muted.
Yeah. Okay, Mrs. Murphy made a motion to accept the staffing report as presented, and Mrs. Price, I believe, seconded it. Although she was muted at the time, but we can read lips. Modern technology. So further discussion.
Can you all hear me? Because I can't hear anybody.
I can hear you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right. Raise a hand.
John, we can hear you.
We can hear you, Jack, but you can't hear us.
What a messaging.
Yeah.
He's a computer guy.
Yeah, go to messaging.
Do we have that option? So is that a six zero or six one then?
Yeah. Let me hold up a message to him.
Do you want me to? We can call him.
Hey, vote. He said vote for it, so it's seven zero.
Seven zero.
Yeah.
All right, Mr. President, I move to give the superintendent the discretion to give essential staff that are required to report to work to the district facility because they cannot perform their job from home up to an extra $3 per hour as pandemic pay. This amount will end at the end of this pandemic and be determined by the board and/or the superintendent. As part of this motion, the board gives the superintendent the discretion to, one, identify different groups of employees that are eligible to receive the pandemic pay, and two, the amount of pandemic pay to be given to each group of employees.
We're sorry, your call cannot be completed.
Okay, we've had a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Mrs. Murphy, a second by Mrs. Price. All those wanting to vote for it, raise your hand. Okay. We have seven zero.
Uh, Doug?
Yeah.
Abstained.
She's abstained.
Oh, excuse me, six zero. I thought you raised your hand. I'm.
Sorry.
I think, and the reason you abstained is potential for conflict of interest on your part.
Correct.
That's six zero. It's not six zero.
Six one.
Yeah.
Yes. So.
I would walk out of the room if I could, but I can't.
Well, you turn off, leave the meeting, but that'd be hard to get back into. So we understand why you voted no in this case. So, all right, moving on to.
Mr. President, in regard to the resolution and non-renewal of a non-tenured teacher's contract, Resolution 1920-020, whereas Karina Tuttle is currently employed in Unified School District of 453 Leavenworth County, Kansas, whereas the Board of Education of said Unified District Number 453 Leavenworth County, Kansas, finds that the contract of Karina Tuttle should be non-renewed and that Karina Tuttle should be given notice on or before May 15, 2020, of the intent of the Board of Education to non-renew her contract. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education of the Unified School District of 453 Leavenworth County, Kansas as follows. It is hereby declared the intent of the Board of Education. It is hereby declared the intent of the Board of Education, Unified District number four, five, three, Leavenworth County, Kansas, that the employment contract of Karina Tuttle is a teacher of non-renewed for the twenty twenty one school year, and the clerk of the Board of Education is directed to give written notice in person or by restricted state, United States mail to Karina Tuttle honor before May fifteenth, twenty twenty of the board's intent to non-renew this contract for the twenty twenty one school year. Adopted by the Board of Education, District four, five, three, Leavenworth County, Kansas, the thirteenth day of April, twenty twenty.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a for Mrs. Murphy? Do we have a second? Have a second, Mrs. Wells. All those in favor, raise a hand. We have seven zero. Thank you.
Mr. President, I have resolution in regard to non-renewal of a non-tenured teacher's contract, Resolution nineteen twenty oh one nine, whereas David Perez is currently employed in Unified School District number four, five, three, Leavenworth County, Kansas, and whereas the Board of Education of said Unified District four, five, three, Leavenworth County, Kansas, files the contract of David Pratt should be non-renewed and that David Pratt should be given written notice honor before May fifteenth, twenty twenty of the intent of the Board of Education to non-renew his contract for the twenty 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 one school year. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of Unified School District number four, five, three, Leavenworth County, Kansas as follows. It is hereby declared to be the intent of the Board of Education of Unified School District number four, five, three, Leavenworth County, Kansas, that the employment contract of David Pratt as a teacher be non-renewed for the twenty 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 one school year, and the clerk of the Board of Education is directed to give written notice in person or by restricted United States mail to David Pratt honor before May fifteenth, twenty twenty of the board's intent to non-renew the contract for the twenty 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 one school year, adopted by the Board of Education of Unified School District of four, five, three, Leavenworth County, Kansas, the thirteenth day of April, twenty twenty.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mrs. Murphy and a second by Mr. Carney. All those in favor, raise a hand. Seven zero. And I do need to point out that Mrs. Schumacher is going to have to send us all the DocuSign thing to take care of, so please take care of that as fast as you can. Appreciate that. All right, moving on to Agenda item fourteen, community information minutes for Leavenworth County Commission or City Commission, sorry, for the twenty fifth of February and the tenth of March is attached. Leavenworth County Commission for the March twenty twenty is attached. Then upcoming meeting dates. There's three of them listed on there. Agenda item fifteen. The eleventh is the board meeting, although we are going to have to add one on the twentieth, next Monday for a board meeting. Memorial Day and the June eighth board meeting. Because of our unique way of doing it, we cannot have patron input tonight. So we're going to go ahead and start with patron, or excuse me, board member comments. Mr. Carney.
Yes, I am. I'd just like to say that my grandchildren were fortunate that my wife was a teacher in the district for over thirty years. She's been with them every day, and one of the comments she made to me about what's going on with this this system is that the teachers are being really flexible with what what they can do and what my wife can do to ensure that the kids are getting all the education they they can get. The only negative comment she had, and I didn't get a chance to go into detail because she just brought up tonight, was the younger kids seem to have a problem with the Zoom, the Zoom aspect, at least with 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 our grandkids, that age group, fourth graders. And so I don't know, I think that might just be a technical thing more than anything, but other than that, I think it's going well, all things considered.
All right, thank you. Mr. Goodman.
Yeah, um, so I just want to point out that we've been doing a great job on keeping all the kids on and engaged in in the Zoom. I know we've had our issues with it. But my kids have kind of taken to it like a duck to water. And I appreciate all the the work that Mr. Harrods put into this and making this all work. The only, the only request that I would have is that, a special request, that the teachers of my kids in particular get a little bit more work because they're driving me crazy.
That's why the kids will be coming back to school as soon as they can because their parents will force them out of the house.
As soon as humanly possible. I'm home all day long, they're home all day long. It's I I absolutely agree with the with the teacher, though. I have seen, you know, kind of a remarkable change in in my kids, at the very least. They have become, you know, more family centric and and helping each other out. I hate to say it's kind of a silver lining in in this whole deal that we've come together as a family. So this has actually been really good. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Mrs. Murphy.
Well, first, I want to go back to where we gave our superintendent the discretion on the pandemic pay. I cannot praise all of our staff and our educators enough for everything that they have been doing for us. We're all in uncharted waters right now, and of course, when you're in seas that you're not sure of, you're going to have sharks. But we're fortunate that we also have the dolphins to battle the sharks off. And our first, what I still call our first responders, our staff that is there serving food and taking care of our buildings and taking care of the technology so our students can continue their education, are our frontline responders. And I can't say how much that we, you know, put enough words, how much we really truly do appreciate them because it's not an easy task. And I know a lot of us, me included, I wouldn't know how to do all this. I my hair would already be laying on the floor somewhere. So that's not my forte. So we really appreciate all of our teachers and all of our staff and everyone that's come together to make all this work. Outside of that, I still believe this is probably one of the best school districts my children have ever been attended in, and one is actually still dual, so she still has classes. Evidently, at eight thirty in the morning at both schools at the same time, we're still figuring out those logistics there, but we'll get it figured out. I I just see more amazing things coming in. I do know this will not last forever. We will be back on a course, and it will be to some sense of normalcy. We just have to have faith in that. And I know we will all be wiser and smarter about everything we do once that happens.
Thank you. Mr. Powell.
Yes, sir. I just, I think it's worth reminding ourselves that when we say worldwide pandemic, we really are saying something that is affecting every human being on this planet. And so we kind of get focused on our the microcosm of where we are. And I think we are doing so well in this community and in this school district that we sometimes forget just how bad it is outside our sphere of influence. And so I just want to say thank you to the board members that are sitting here and the board members that have been on this board for a while, to the superintendent and to the administrative and educators. Because when we had to turn the switch and do this incredibly difficult thing, you guys had set up the board, and I say that to former board members, you set up our district to be able to do this, and I just personally want to thank you because this kind of thing just doesn't happen overnight. We don't get prepared overnight, but we were ready. It's because of your efforts. So I just want to thank all of you for that and to be part of this. I would just offer, if I had a concern, it's, you know, as we kind of get through this last end of year part, I have concerns for post-secondary. You know, how are the colleges going to deal with receiving our seniors now graduated and those kind of things? So I hope as we go into board sessions later on, you know, Dr. Roth, if you and your staff could kind of help us see how that's going to transpire as we go back to school in college, you know, when our kids go on. I'm just really concerned about them being as flexible and them as ready to accept our students and and get them back on course to prepare them for future careers. But thank you so much to all of you.
Mr. Powell, one of the things I will, you brought up a great point. One of the things that under Dr. Watson and KSDE, they've solicited, as you may or may not know, I participate or listen to a state Zoom meeting every day with the State Department. One of the things that they are doing is they requested each superintendent to recommend a senior student to help with just that. And so they're going to select between fifty and sixty five seniors across the state of Kansas. We did nominate, or we'll find out tomorrow if our nomination was accepted or not, but regardless, will be that part of it will help lead what your question is. It'll be based on what students are seeing that they need, what students not only need locally, but what they need to help with that post-secondary choice, whether it be the job market, military, whatever that would look like. And I can't, I cannot commend our State Department and the leadership of our department enough because they're really stepping up with some very unique ideas to help support every district in the state of Kansas. And I've opened our senior gets nominated, we find out tomorrow, but regardless, students will help lead in this process as well.
Just as as one follow-up, if I could. Maybe in a future Zoom meeting that we have as a board, if we have to continue this, we can bring in KCK and maybe some of our other post-secondary partners we have right now to see what they see for the future come September. I just offer up that I'm sure they're thinking about it, too.
Thank you. Mrs. Wells.
So I just wanted to point out the fact that because I did not vote does not mean that I don't commend all of our essential staff. My son works for our school district, so I didn't want there to be any kind of conflict of interest. But I appreciate each and every one of you, especially our food service for providing the necessary things that our children need in the community, and I'm really proud of our district pushing it out further to those new locations today. And I hope that everybody that is hungry is able to eat. So I appreciate the efforts that they've all done, and we've got a great team of people that are reporting every day, and our teachers are doing great. I agree with Mr. Goodman. My seventh grader needs more work. Please, please give her more work. So that's all I have.
And because I'm alphabetically challenged, Mrs. Price.
It's fine, Doug. I know that we're living in historic times, and I I am just amazed at the ability of our educators and our support staff to pull off the Herculean things that they had to do to make the district operate as it is. When you think about some of the other districts in our country that are still struggling, trying to figure out how to make distance learning work, our district is just knocking it out of the park. I know we've had some issues, but I just cannot thank our educators and our support staff enough because I just think they do an amazing job. If it wasn't, if it wasn't evident before, it is more than evident now, and I have a very, very deep heartfelt thank you to all of them. And I also think we all also all living in this, we all have to give ourselves a little bit of grace and just remember each day that we have to do this all together.
Thank you. I don't have kids at home, so I didn't pull out my hair because of problems with doing homework, like Mrs. Murphy was talking about. I lost my a long time ago. My own three sons caused that to go a long, long time ago.
You're more than welcome to come over and help mine.
Social distancing, and I'm a risk factor since I'm over.
Had to cop out.
And I will take it greatly. If I could go out, I would be seeing my grandson big time, but his father's a paramedic in Lawrence, and God knows, I don't want to be anywhere near some of the stuff he's at.
Yeah, we've been keeping the non-scheduled patron input out. She's almost two, so.
Yeah, well, want to just echo everything that everybody had to say about our incredible staff and administrators. You know, on the thirteenth of March, when Dr. Roth told them we're closed for the rest of the year, what does that mean? They didn't go into shock and, you know, curl up into a fetal ball and, you know, whimper. They just took at it and what do we have to do? And the little bit of money that we're trying to give extra to those people that are really essential to the district operating, the food service, the technical people, the janitors, people that do maintenance is just, it's not what we owe them, but that's what's physically possible to give them right now. And then the incredible flexibility of our teachers is unreal. We saw that on the video that we saw during the thing, that fifteen sixteen minute video, which was just amazingly inspiring. You know, as Kennedy said, ask not what your country can do for you, ask what you can do for the country, and those people in that segment were saying they were just, they're doing everything for their kids that they can think of. And that's what makes Leavenworth Schools a really great place to have students or to be associated even tangentially like myself. And what, Ro, thanks to you and everybody works for you. Yes, well.
If, I just want to make everybody aware, if you're not already aware, that our mayor, Mike Griswold, has been giving weekly updates in a town hall setting. I thank Dr. Roth very much for the way that he's portraying our district and giving the information out to our families, and I hope everyone watches the one that is scheduled for tomorrow. Dr. Roth, are you are you invited to tomorrow's meeting?
No, I'm not. I did my couple of weeks ago.
Okay. Well, I appreciate the way that you portray us to the public, and you're you're doing a fine job with that, and everybody watch the town halls and get informed. Thank you.
Hey Doug, I got one by.
Yes.
One, one other thing that Gloria mentioned to me. Some of you may know, but she she taught secondary most of her career, and she said elementary teachers definitely need to make more money.
I had a kindergarten teacher, preschool teacher as a wife. I understand that. Ain't likely to happen anytime soon, but that's okay. All right, that case adjourned. Thank you all. And remember, you got stuff to sign that Brenda's going to send you.
You're already.
Stay well.
Bye.